Oh, oh, oh.
Ready? Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town of Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearings for Monday, January 27, 2020. Before we get to the public hearing portions of the meeting, there's a few housecleaning items that we need to take care of. When we do get to the public hearing portion, I will read the appeal into the minutes. The applicant can come to the table, tell us what they want, why they want it. If you are here for a variance, it is incumbent upon you to give us a hardship from which that variance can be granted. If you are here for a special permit, the burden is not quite as high, but the new use can't be more detrimental than the existing use. Some of us may or may not have some questions up here. Everything will go through me. It's not a dialogue. It's not going to be a back and forth. Once we are finished, I will open it up to people, interested parties in the audience, if they have any questions. First order of business is, we have two bills. One for $126 to the Worcester Telegram and Gazette for the December 30, 2019, legal notices, and one for $21.38 for W.B. Mason for office supplies.
You want to approve such bills?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have some new business. We have a memorandum from Town Council regarding privileged pre-existing non-conforming uses. Mr. McGoldrick?
Yep, so this memo was prepared at the request of the board and town staff, looking at pre-existing uses specifically prior, uses existing prior to zoning. And we were looking at, you know, questions arising of what evidence the board can consider in regards to those types of uses and establishing those pre-existing uses. So obviously, that's a very complex and difficult question. Town Council has provided this memo to help us kind of navigate that. They looked at the background of MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6, which is typically for lawfully existence, lawfully begun properties, and is the statutory protection for pre-existing uses. He then kind of briefly goes into the types of issues in regards to zoning interpretations and administrative appeals that these questions and these kinds of evidentiary findings might be required. So from that, we then, he kind of goes over some of the potential types of evidence that the board can use to qualify those prior existing non-conforming uses. In discussion with Town Council after this and kind of getting a further understanding, we discussed the general gist of the finding is that the board can consider essentially, and should consider, all information presented to them. However, the weight of different information and different evidence should be considered separately. So in that regard, the board does have to take into account things like the ability of the evidence to really prove, from a zoning standpoint, what that prior use is. So, you know, things like affidavits and signed letters, although compelling, might have to be weighed differently than actual building permit records or other types of findings. And that's up to the board to kind of consider and then make their findings upon that consideration. So that's the general overview of that. Obviously, it's a more detailed memo, and I refer to that as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Just had sort of two clarifying questions from the memo. First is that, once we balance the evidence, what we still have to find is that the use when it started was legal and that the use carried forward, right?
Correct.
Okay. And the second question is, Town Council concluded that the burden of proof is on the applicant, not on the board, right?
That's correct.
Anyone else have any questions for Chris?
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I think that's, pretty much sums it up, and obviously, I'm happy to continue to address any questions.
I'm just going to take one thing out of order, because I know it's being continued. From December 30, 864 Hartford Turnpike, New Singler Wireless PCS, I believe is being continued.
Yeah, so there's a request to continue to the February 27th?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. Zoning Board of Appeals meeting.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Motion to continue?
Tucker. To February 24 at 6:30 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. Our next continued hearing is 5-9 Julio Drive, Residence B1, continued from the prior December 30th and actually from, I believe, the November meetings.
Evening, members of the board.
No. Oh, wait, no. No, I got these letters. Looking for the Mullins letter.
Is it under the, yeah?
My binder?
Under.
Oh, ah, there they go. Housecleaning, we need you to sign the Mullins letter, because Mr. George was not here last month.
Oh, so just wanted to make sure. He's your voting member as well?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So we just need a signature from the applicant. It's basically, Mr. George was not here last month, and he did review the videotape of last month's meeting, so he's up to speed on everything. And, yes, he was here for the previous meeting, when it was originally opened. Thank you. Okay. Counselor? Can I just state your names to the record, please?
Thank you. Justin Raifelson, on behalf of Jeremy Welch and Chin Sun.
I'm Jeremy Welch.
Yeah, okay.
So, first order of business, we spoke to Mr. McGoldrick regarding relief, what relief was sought, and my understanding is, there may have been, who's fault is unclear at this point, but there was some confusion in the application regarding what relief was being sought, whether, what section was, is being sought under Section 9, Section 4. But the notice, there's a little confusion in the notice, and Mr. McGoldrick had suggested that we address that first.
Yeah, so I clarified with the Building Inspector Patty Sheehan, and in regards to this one, the 5-9 Julio Drive, the legal notice was written fairly broadly. So it was actually cited for Section 9, as well as variances under Section 7, Table 2, which is the dimensional regulations, and 4B as well. So in regards to that, you just have to be conscious of, when voting, the context of that vote. My recommendation would be that the most applicable section is the Section 9, which is the administrative appeal of the zoning enforcement letter. And so...
So effectively, they're appealing...
There could be a withdrawal, we would still need a withdrawal of the other two sections, and then a continuing, and then could move forward with the Section 9. But obviously, I wanted to clarify that with the applicant as well, so that they felt comfortable with that kind of procedural.
So I think the, some of the confusion stems from the fact that the relief sought is under Section 4. However, the means to getting that relief is through Section 9. So, you know, we're not in opposition to continuing it, to provide notice to a butters, but I don't think that withdrawal is necessarily the only means to achieving that. I think an amendment with new notice sent out to a butters would suffice 40A. And also, the withdrawal of, withdrawing the special permit aspect of it, that's fine. And the variance section, technically speaking, when we're asking for continuation of a non-conforming use, the board can treat that also as a variance application.
Correct.
Which, so I don't know that we have to withdraw the variance portion of it. But I think...
I think the problem is, it's citing the wrong section, I think.
Yeah, so, I mean, just to clarify, so the Section 9 was noticed, so there wouldn't need to be any other notification provided or letters sent out. But the, and the board could, I mean, technically, the board could vote on all three if they wanted to. It's just, it's a procedural matter that I think the Section 9 is the most applicable for the, as stated is the avenue that the relief is sought. It may be a non-issue. It is very procedural, but...
Okay. So...
I just would defer to the board, and, you know, I don't think it's necessary to withdraw the application. I don't, and I think that actually may cause some issues for us in the long term, but I think an amendment of it, given that it was noticed properly, and again, I'll defer to the board, I don't know of any statutory requirement.
So again, there's, no amendments are necessary. All three sections were noticed, and as they were applied for, they were noticed in the application. So all it is, that there would be three vote sheets before the board tonight. They can either choose to withdraw.
Or, or vote...
Sections of them, or vote on all three.
Yeah, okay.
It's really just a procedural matter.
Everyone understand that?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
We do have a few other pieces of documentation that Mr. Welch has provided me today, that he's made copies for the board. They're pretty self-explanatory, but I would just inquire as to whether the board would accept these, and...
Sure.
Just one affidavit and census record and...
Oh, these are copies.
And these aren't already in our...
No.
These are neighbors.
Hold on one sec, please.
Sure.
It's not really an affidavit, this is just a letter. Okay.
Can I just tell him his chair looks like it's going to break? He might want to switch it. It's like going like that.
That's true.
Yeah. You're happy?
I don't want him to get hurt.
Thank you. Want to swap out the chair? Feel free.
Yeah, it's going like that.
Motion to swap out the chair.
For the sake of...
For everyone else.
Yeah, it looks like it needs to be...
Here, I'll take that. I'll get it out of here.
Okay.
Jeremy Welch speaking. Just to explain that packet that was just given to you, a lot of those are letters that my wife got from the current owners of properties that are on Julio Drive, our neighbors, our buddies, I guess. Okay? They're just basically letters that they wrote today, saying that they're okay with the fact that the property being a three-family. They've, under the impression it's always been a three-family. There was a letter in my tax document in there showing my most current tax document, that the town is still taxing me as a three-family.
Yeah, and you do understand, we've discussed that before, that what the assessor does has no bearing on what...
I understand that.
And this is, an issue has come up countless times in the past.
I understand, that's all.
They just assess what they see.
Right. And I also brought in the current census data, showing it, there's three units that the town clerk is sending to my property, 9 Julio Drive, 9 Julio Drive Apartment 2, and 7 Julio Drive. And it's, to my understanding, that the town clerk is aware it's a three-family, the assessor's office is aware it's a three-family, and the town municipality electrical company is aware it's a three-family. The only one that's not aware that's a three-family seems to be the Building Inspector's department, or they seem to be contentious in debating that. All the neighbors are aware it's a three-family. We have current owners in the audience that have given affidavits that it's a three-family. It's been that way since the 50s. And that's all I'm trying to, again, trying to give you all the information I can probably give you, justify the fact that this has been going on for 60 years. It's been there with no problem, nobody's complained about it, and now all of a sudden, it's a big issue. And this has jeopardized my entire family's lives. Okay? And I need to emphasize that.
I think if you refer to the Town Council's memorandum, he does cite, as Mr. McGoldrick stated, that there are certain things that you should, you can consider, and voting records, which we provided quite a while ago, those can be considered, although not, they're not the primary source, but they are certainly...
As I said last month, I do have an issue with the voting records, in the sense that they don't detail that it's a three-family house. They just detail that three families live there.
And then we had the discussion about you saying, well, it could be a rooming house.
Exactly, yeah.
And if that is...
Or it could have just been rented rooms, you know? It's not, you know, like I said, people can be living together, not even in a rooming house, with different families and registered to vote.
Sure, fair enough. But the Census Bureau is sending three units, to three units, and the Census Bureau information, unless it's changed somewhere else, every 10 years, they're sending it where they think it should go, and that's three separate units they're sending it to. That should also be considered as evidence that there's three separate units. And I think, we also spoke about...
Actually, the town clerk, this is not the federal census, this is just the annual from the town.
But that, even, yeah, even more relevant, but I think, we talked a little last time about the fact that they may have abandoned the use by having three families, or by having one family live in...
One family, yeah. And also, from not having a full kitchen, also.
We do have the letter from a tenant, and the tenant is here.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
The, there are questions about what appliances were in there, and it doesn't, there's no specification in the bylaw, what constitutes a kitchen. There's nothing that says, "A kitchen is a stove, a microwave, and two chairs and a table." So, you know, he says that he took the, one of the appliances out at one point, but he was going to provide it. But again, a kitchen area is a...
And again, yeah, sure, yeah.
My understanding is that there are certain building code requirements, and also requirements for when you're renting, as to what has to be included in a kitchen for it to be a rentable unit. Do you know how those would apply in this situation?
Well...
So, for example, if there's no stove, is it legal in Massachusetts to rent it as an apartment?
Jeremy speaking, yes. As long as you have a letter from a tenant, and tenant is okay with that.
Okay, so that's a waivable?
That is waivable. I do have a letter, and that tenant is present in his room today. To verify that.
Okay. So just as a, again, to separate building code from zoning, there is, so essentially, from a zoning perspective, kind of things like appliances and interior layouts aren't, they're difficult to regulate, as the board doesn't really have as much purview on the interior of the structure. I would note that we do have a definition of dwelling unit in the zoning bylaw, and I would refer to that as the definition for establishing, and it does differentiate between one family, one dwelling, two-family dwellings, and then essentially, more than three-family.
But the argument was about abandoning the use, so that's why you were raising...
Right.
Right, you're correct.
...one of the kitchen cats.
So let's go there.
Excuse me.
Hold on one...
There's no dwelling unit.
What's that?
The dwelling definition doesn't say anything about kitchens. Is there anywhere that says anything about kitchens?
So could I just clarify that the Massachusetts State Building Code supersedes the zoning bylaw?
Mm-hmm.
And there is a definition in the Building Code Mass General Law and in the Board of Health Regulations Mass General Law that says what a kitchen is. And of course, you would have to have, it's, you know, you have to have eating, cooking, sleeping, and living facilities.
Right.
So without the cooking, it is not established as a dwelling unit, by the definition of health in building.
Right. And so that's probably not waivable, right?
It's not.
Right, okay.
Okay. And can you go back to the expired use?
Yeah, so...
Even if, even if it were.
Right, so, so...
Which I'm not conceding to, yeah.
I did provide that clarification memo, where I touched on that slightly. Obviously, that would be a separate question. It's not entirely before the board. I mean, in a way, it is, but it's not entirely before the board tonight. But that would be my understanding, is that even if the board did establish with the evidence, or, you know, had the finding that this was a pre-existing, prior to zoning use, now essentially, the use being appropriate, existing appropriate as a two-family, from the zoning bylaw standpoint, over the past two years, or over a section of those two years that this was occupied, that use has been abandoned. Section 4C of the zoning bylaw, and that would be, that does include a provision that it's not to be reestablished as well.
Okay. And the last question I have, the way the property is being used today, does our decision have any impact on that?
From a zoning standpoint, the existing use can continue, as it's inhabited by essentially a single-family unit. So that use would be allowed to continue. Again, I wouldn't speak to any building code that would...
Right, no, I'm just talking about...
Correct, but from a zoning perspective, the existing use can continue to go.
Okay. Okay.
So no one has to move out, or anything like that?
No.
So the sale of a property would trigger...
The sale of property is irrelevant.
But that would trigger the, so the existing use, as it is now, is acceptable, is what you're saying?
Right, so the, the existing use being used by...
Define what the existing use is.
By individuals who are related, by consanguinity or affinity, under the zoning bylaw, that would continue to be allowed. Again, depending upon the dwelling units for building code, there may be matters that need to be resolved in that way, for the inhabitants of the separate space's interior, but that is not before the board tonight.
Could I just clarify just a little bit more?
Absolutely, yeah.
So in order for this to be a two-family, right now, it's not clear as to how it is being used, because again, you know, the owner thinks, you know, with a third kitchen, that this would have been a three-family. So you can imagine that it appears that there's two living units, and then there's some other rooms that are without a kitchen. They do have sanitary facilities, but without a kitchen, so it's not clear what that is. So there is going to be some clarification that's required.
As a two-family, which, which I believe the town agrees, that the paperwork documents a two-family...
Right.
Pre-zoning. My, my, the question was really regarding its current use right now. That's, nothing changes, based on what happens here tonight.
It's assigned a building code clarification or classification as a two-family, but the way it's being...
Right, but that has nothing to do with, right, that's not a CBA issue.
But the way it's being used right now on the interior is unclear.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so to clarify, I would refer back to the building permit on the moving of the structure across the street, which establishes it prior to zoning as a two-family.
Right.
I'd suggest that that protection would be, would stand under Chapter 40A, Section 6. However, the use as a three-family, if it were inhabited differently than it is today, would not be protected.
Does that, Mary Beth, does that answer?
Yeah, that, that explains it. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else you wish to add, or...
I don't understand how, Jeremy's speaking, I don't understand how I'm abandoning my use as a three-family. It's been a three-family continuously. I have a notarized statement from the tenant indicating that he did not require a kitchen because of the situation that he was in. Okay? And there is ample, ample space for a kitchen there. There is actually a plug there for the kitchen, for the stove.
No one's denying that piece of it.
Okay. And there are three separate families there. There is no state law or federal law that says I have to rent to strangers. I can rent to my own family and let them live in my apartments.
Except it does, go ahead.
So, so what I would say is that the, in regards to that, again, I don't want to get into this kind of discussion too much of defining family, that's not what we're doing here today. But again, so perhaps the better way to phrase it is that it is afforded the protection as two separate dwelling units under that original building permit. I would suggest that, having no additional building permits from that date forward, that an intensification to a three-dwelling unit structure, it would not be afforded that protection.
And Jeremy speaking again, and what is responsible to the town to ensure they have all the proper records? When you have municipalities and portions of the town that have records showing it's a three-family, you have a town utility company that has, has electrical meters in place...
As, again, and I've had conversations with Selco, and their comment to me was, they're in the business of selling electricity, if someone asks for a meter, they're putting it in. And they don't check, and they can't issue a variance just by the fact that they've given a meter. That, that does not establish a use.
But as a person, as a person who works for an electrical company, you are required to have a permit for those meters, and you are required to have... to have a permit for those meters, and you are required to have a service request for those meters, and you are required to have a definition as what those meters are being used for. And therefore, Selco does not have them.
To clarify that, so obviously, the kind of municipality is broken up into separate departments, separate sections. They all operate under different procedures. So as much as those procedures are, you know, you know, attempted to be aligned with each other, there is, you know, again, there's a difference in the definition of dwelling unit between the building code and the, and our zoning code. So all of those different definitions, all those different procedures, may not always align exactly. So just because a assessment document says it's a three-family that does not establish from a zoning perspective that it is a three-family under our bylaw, because they're operating under separate procedures and separate documents.
Yes, sir.
Chairman today is speaker.
Yeah.
On behalf of the fire department, Fire Chief Jim Bonas, Deputy Chief Seth Colby, who actually did an inspection of the property. I went to a hearing in Milford with Mr. Welch. From what we see, there are three separate distinct apartments, but we don't know what it is defined as. When we went to the hearing in Milford, they basically sent us back here. What we've observed is either an illegal three-family or a boarding house. Those are the only definitions that would fit with what we've seen. Or this is just a two-family residence that has one related family all living throughout the house. If this is deemed a three-family, as I've explained to Mr. Welch, it's going to require them to put a sprinkler, an alarm system into the building, and the current smoke detectors that he had put in there are all going to meet the code, so. They're going to raise a lot of code issues and life safety issues if you change.
Right, I get that, but those are separate from what we're doing.
Can I just ask a clarification question?
Yeah, please, yeah.
So in other words, if we were to grant the relief that they seek and declare it a three-family, that would actually maybe make it uninhabitable under the code, because it would lack certain life safety?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's-
And as you said, that those are two separate and distinct issues.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
So, you know, even if you granted a three-family, he would have to get necessary permits. But I just want to comment on the, um, the issue regarding, we keep bringing this up, but the only information that the towns provided regarding the previous status of this was that building permit from 1961, which is not signed by anyone and not authen- it's like going to, you, if you, again, it's not authenticated by anyone or anything. It could have just been an application. It may never have been signed off, it wasn't signed off on, based on what we have. So I don't know how we can use that as gospel to, for, for the town to say that that's, that's the one piece of information they're relying upon here, and it's not even, it wouldn't even be legally admissible into court.
So I'd suggest to the board that that is the information that we have before us. Again, in weighing evidence, we have no signed building permit record that says that it is a three-family, and so lacking that counter evidence, I would suggest the board can rely on the two-family document, signed or unsigned.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question with that?
Sure.
So, council, so you're, what I hear you saying is that that document isn't authenticated in any way. It's an application for a permit, and you're saying we should discount it, sort of completely on that basis, that it's not signed?
I'm, I'm not saying you should discount it, but, you know, if you're going to weigh all the other evidence we've provided, and, and to say that your evidence is, is better than ours, when it's not signed by anyone and it's not authenticated, I think you should give that the weight that it deserves as well.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
I think that's fair.
Well, from the other perspective, though, we're conceding that it's a two-family, where it's in a single-family zone.
Jeremy-
Throwing that out, it would just be a single-family house, that ends. So, so I, I think at that point, the town was willing to concede that it was a two-family house.
Jeremy Welch speaking. Can I just clarify something that the chief said?
Sure.
From, based on what you had said, it sounds like if it's a three-family, I need to put sprinklers in, and I need to put in hard-wired fire alarms, is that correct?
Correct.
If it's a two-family, I don't have to do that?
Correct.
Does, does anyone, do you have any other questions, or?
I just want to speak. Yes, I've been sitting here thinking and looking over everything in this case, if you will. And the only record we have is, on the town side, is this permit to move the structure. And I look at that, and I might look at it the way you do, too. There is a section there where the, the person applying for the permit listed two families. Now, that could mean two families were living there in three units. It could have meant two families were living in two units. It could have meant one family was living in two units. It wasn't, it's not very clear in that application. But it's all we have on our side. So we look at that as this is a legal two-family, because someone applied to move it, and yes, no, it wasn't signed, nothing was stamped, but the structure was moved. It definitely was moved. So somewhere along the line, it got approved and it was done. I'm assuming that. So I would place a certain amount of weight on that. I also place a lot of weight on your signed affidavits.
It's actually signed by the building inspector and-
Board of Health.
Farther down, the second sheet.
Second page.
Yeah, so-
And planning board.
Now, now, I will say, that's the, the signed application. I don't know if it means it was signed after the move, but it was moved. It was physically moved.
It also says building permit approval above the signatures. So I'm not sure, actually, that it's true, that it's an, that it's an unsigned, just an application and not an approval of a permit. And as you say, it was in fact moved.
So council's in the mid, not hearing that part. So the second page of that shows a signed permit. So to your point about it not being signed, it was signed, but the, in the last hearing, you talked about the application itself, and what can we read from the application? So I was speaking to that.
And again-
Do we have that? Do we have that?
Do we have, yeah, it's on the-
Yeah, it's the second page.
I never saw that second page.
It says building permit, it says building permit approval, and it's signed by C.E. Drake of the Board of Health, and three other signatures. One is-
Planning board and one is building inspector.
Building inspector, and I'm not sure who the third one is.
Scroll up so you can see the application itself.
So this is the, it's the second page of the same application. By Giulia Colangelo. And then this is the first page, which you've seen the two families.
Yeah. So I would concede there's evidence that you do have a two-family house that pre-dates zoning, you know, in a single-zone district. I, I do not think the evidence presented, I do not believe the evidence presented shows that it was a three-family pre-zoning. But there's really nothing that establishes that, in my view.
As far as town records, now, the appellant has tried to show us a lot of evidence to the contrary.
But it doesn't raise to the level, as far as I'm concerned.
No, okay.
But the level is not beyond a reasonable doubt. It's-
I, I know.
Preponderance of evidence.
Yeah. Does anyone else up here have any question?
I think Mr. Welch wanted to address the board.
Just to get a clear understanding, because there's back and forth on this. If it's a two-family, there's no further requirements to be done, as far as the-
That, I have to defer to-
There would be, there would be code issues to address.
Such as what code issues?
So you would have to address the number of electric meters, going back to three electric meters, one for the common area, and two, one for each dwelling unit. We'd also have to have a floor plan to address where the, each unit clearly exists, identify each unit, show means of egress for each unit. Things like that would have to be addressed.
Who does the floor plan?
Whoever you choose to do that.
And anything else?
So that would be reviewed, and then upon that review, life safety issues would be reviewed. Life safety is not grandfathered for paths of egress, smoke detectors, those types of things are not grandfathered.
And just to clarify again, the sprinklers are not going to be required?
Right, so I can help answer. So for a two-family dwelling, because we're clearly identifying that that was on the building permit, that that was pre-existing two-family dwelling, a sprinkler system's not required for two-family dwelling. It is required for three or more.
And a lot of evidence has been given to us that it's a three-family.
I understand that.
But I, I know, but so-
Again, into a situation where finances is becoming a big issue.
Exactly.
Sprinkler systems, hard-wired fire alarms, egresses, I got quotes for all these things from contractors, and they're ludicrous. I'm at the point where it's probably cheaper just to demolish the property and kick my family out. So that's the choice you guys are giving me today.
Well, that's, that's, I would, yeah, I'm not even going to go. If, if that's where you want to go, I'm ready to close the hearing and call them both. Yeah.
It's emotional, so.
Yeah.
Comments from the audience.
And it's his livelihood.
So again, I just want to-
Willing to accept the two-family's grandfathered status, if, that's fine.
So I just, I just want to clarify, again-
Did you say you're willing?
We're willing to accept the two-family grandfathered status.
And that means, then just withdraw your applications, and we're done.
So I thought we-
I'm sorry?
Didn't we say there was a single family?
No, no, we have signed, there's a signed statement from 1961, I believe, that shows it is a two-family.
Well, I, I think it still requires-
No, I'm not opening it up yet, okay?
I think we still require the vote of, of the board, just to get it in writing.
No, it's a two-family. That's what the building inspector has deemed it.
But I would like to have that very clear, and I'd like to have that, it's clear it's a grandfathered two-family.
Yeah, because the grandfather part is also necessary.
So for the building permit, it is a grandfathered two-family. However, the items that we discussed would have to be addressed for the two-family.
We'll do what we can do.
But it's just a withdrawal.
So, well, so, so-
Well, hang on, hang on, yeah.
Yeah, so procedurally, if the applicant wants to withdraw, they'd have to request a withdrawal without prejudice. Do we have a, and then the board could vote, would have to vote on that withdrawal without prejudice. Kind of, so that's up to the board, how they want to address that. I'd suggest that the, allowing the withdrawal without prejudice allows the most flexibility in the future. The board may wish to deny that and allow no flexibility, if they feel the question is answered sufficiently.
Such as?
To deny and, and say that it is not a three-family, but, but the board-
I'm willing, I'm willing to, withdrawal is fine by me, and just that it's a two-family. That, that works for me. Does that, anyone else have an issue?
So I just want to make it clear that the building inspector is designating it, designating it as a two-family based on that permit.
Yeah, pre-existing use, yeah.
Okay.
That's never been, that's never been in dispute.
So that's fine. The process is that the applicant can appeal that distinction and provide other evidence to the contrary, which you have done, but now you can decide whether you're okay with the building inspector's designation or not, because there are, in either case, something has to be done to the property to make it safe.
Yeah.
And-
If you withdraw, it's out of our hands, and then it's your issue with the building inspector, in terms of the two-family, and whatever her requirements are.
Can I just ask for clarification also? If, if it were to be deemed a single-family, are there any code issues? Anything that has to be done for it to remain occupied?
Sure. As a single-family, still, the travel path of egress is not clear, and there are distinct separations in, in the building. So a floor plan, at the minimum, would be required. And upon submission of the floor plan, the building inspector and fire department review that floor plan for life safety issues. If we're reviewing as a two-family, we would do that. If we're reviewing it as a single-family, upon the request of the applicant, we would review it that way.
Okay, so there's something that's required, no matter what the outcome is.
A floor, floor plan is the starting point.
Yeah. Do you understand?
I need to break it down to three meters and get a floor plan. I understand that.
Yeah. Okay. So, are you, so you would have continued grandfathered use as a two-family.
Okay.
I think we, legally, I think it's still better for him to go through the voting process.
You would?
So, so that's where I want to clarify, whether the board votes on the withdrawal without prejudice, that, that could be a, a vote that the board takes, or they could vote on the relief that was required under, or requested under Section 9. So it's up to you. When you say that the board should vote on it, I just, we should clarify what the board, what-
We would vote on the withdrawal, on accepting the withdrawal.
Or do you mean vote on whether it's a three-family?
Vote on whether it's a three-family.
Vote on whether it's a three-family.
So can I just clarify again? So under Section 9, if the original was appeal, original appeal was to appeal the decision of the building inspector was, then you would be denying their appeal.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I just-
Unless it's withdrawn, right.
Unless it's withdrawn.
Unless it's withdrawn, so those are your options.
So your options.
Is there anything we can get to make sure that every department in the town is very clear as to what my property is? If I don't vote for a 20-year-
So again, so I'm not going to speak for other departments. Each department is going to be separate. They're going to have separate definitions and separate indications of what a dwelling unit is. That's why, even if, regardless of how the vote is now, that's why there is still building code requirements that are going to be needed to be met. So I, I would strongly suggest the board would not say that.
Yeah, I would just suggest that after, if you do withdraw, that you would go to the assessor's office and tell them it's a two-family.
And get the building of the code.
Yeah.
I think the only-
But that, that's out of our hands. That, that's not anything at this board.
I think the withdrawal, I'm just apprehensive to agree to withdraw unless we have something in writing from the building inspector.
Then we'll just continue, okay? That's fine.
Well, I'm asking that we vote on.
So just for clarification, so when our documents support that it's a two-family, and the document is the building permit, and there's no further permits changing a use, that document stands alone and speaks for itself. There's no further review that is needed to be done, because the doc, the only permits history on record supports the two-family. That's it. There's no other interpretation to be made by the building inspector's office.
Yeah, withdraw.
Okay, so-
So the board would have to entertain a motion to withdraw the applications for Section 9, Section 4B, and Section 7, Table 2, without prejudice.
Okay, can I get a motion? It's nothing to further discuss. Can I get a motion?
Motion to withdraw.
To accept the withdrawal as specified.
Accept withdrawal.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Can you just have a letter stating that says you're not a week of the block?
That doesn't come from us. Our job is done, in terms of zoning.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, withdrawal without prejudice, and then you'll put all three. Okay, our next continued hearing from December 30th is 196 Grafton Street, Stephen Wallace, continuation of use. Welcome back, counsel.
Thank you, Jerry.
I believe we opened up the hearing last time, but you did not-
That's fair.
That was about as far as we got. We also need Mullins' letter, just, again, Mr. George, watch that three-minute part, but-
But I thought, since there was no testimony-
Because we opened the hearing.
Yeah, it's, we-
We just, we opened the hearing. If we hadn't opened the hearing-
So he basically heard nothing relevant.
Right, yeah, there wasn't much to listen to, yeah.
Substantive comments, I'll just trust.
Just basically affirming-
I'm signing it kind of blind right here.
And if you could, please state your names for the record.
Mr. Wallace.
Attorney Justin Dickelson. On behalf of Mr. Wallace.
Attorney Justin Dickelson on behalf of Mr. Wallace. So at least we have the, the, at least we have that notice issued. It sounds like they're having a problem with section nine. Section nine, but I really don't think it's, forgot to bring it in. I think there's a player putting that forward in there. That wasn't, I didn't do that.
Okay.
Again, um, we just need to address the notice issue, Mr. Mullins.
Uh, yeah, so this notice was, um, applied for the applicant requested an amendment to the, uh, notice. Um, and so this one was listed as section four B, uh, listing other.
Four A.
It says four A.
Sorry, four A, correct.
So is it?
Uh, so, uh, so that's for continuation of the use. Uh, the board can consider, um, under that section. Um, I'd suggest that section nine is the, the more appropriate for, um, appealing the building inspector's, uh, determination of use. Um, but again, that's up to the applicant how they wish to proceed.
Well, again, this is, uh, at the board's discretion. Um, I, when, when he filed this application, or appeal rather, it was directly in relation to the building inspector's determination. And at that point, he noted the section four A being the, uh, relevant section for relief requested. Now, the avenue for taking that appeal is indeed section nine, so, I mean, I think we're talking semantics here. I don't know if the board is comfortable proceeding under four A. I think the board still can because it is.
Can you use section, excuse me, can you use section nine as your justification on a four A appeal?
Sorry, um.
So can you use section nine as the, the reason behind?
Um.
The appeal on four A?
There's no reason.
I, I mean, I.
There's, there's no reason.
Hold on.
I'm sorry.
I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure if the board could consider section nine under the current, um, that, I guess, you know.
You understand what I'm asking?
Uh, no, I, I might.
So, so section nine is continuation of use?
No.
Uh, no, so section nine is the, um, section nine is the administrative appeal.
Section four A.
Section four A is a continuation of a non-conforming use.
So that's what we've, that's what you.
So the notice was under section four A, yeah, continuation of non-existing use, or non, uh, prior non-conforming use. And not under the administrative appeal.
Okay. So, go ahead.
So when, if you look at section nine, when you have the, the section, subsection B, there are three base, potential bases for appeal, right? One is, is the special per, permit, um, which is, uh, um, section number three. And one is the variance, which is number two. And then the only other remaining one is the quote administrative appeal, appeal on number one. And then you have on your application that you're only supposed to select, uh, special permit, variance, or other, right? And I selected other. And, and then the applicable, applicable section right here on your application, really, you're only allowing me to pick one section since it's singular and that, and the most applicable section is for A.
So I want to clarify, it's, it, although it is a procedural matter, I want, this is again, I wanted to bring it to their attention. So, um, section four A, uh, as it was noticed, is requesting a continuation of a, uh, prior non-conforming use. Section nine, which was not noticed, uh, would be an administrative appeal of the building inspector, uh, determination of, uh, of use. So that's why I wanted to bring that up to the applicant so that they could ensure that they are requesting the relief, the relief that they want.
So if I may, may continue.
It can't be nine, because we, hold on, it can't be nine because we noticed.
It was not noticed, correct.
Right.
But, so if I, if I may continue, essentially, every single person here, everything is going under, under section nine, right? Then they should be listing, listing section nine B two for variance or nine B three for, for a special, special permit. By the very nature of the notice, when you say to, to hear the appeal of, right? Appeal means reversal of a decision is the definition, so really.
Not, not necessarily, but.
Well, I mean, so section nine A is a, um, administrative section. It does, uh, outline the process of special permits and variances as well as the administrative appeals. Um, so it is a broader section. But again, the section that was noticed in the application and that was submitted to the board is specifically.
We can only hear section four A, four A.
A.
That's what we're here for.
And then, and then I also would like to point out the error that was made, made in the, in the notice that you gave, because it says to hear the appeal of Stephen Wallace, one ninety-six Grafton Street, for a request for a continuation. Now, I only put for a continuation of. Now, you're, when you say, when you add the words for a request, for a request for, for.
Are you a lawyer, sir?
So I, I submitted.
Prefer to your, talk to your attorney before you.
For a request.
So I, I submitted the, uh, notice, uh, when we received, from the date of the original filing, we received two amendments to the notice from the applicant. I submitted, uh, the legal notice as we were writ, as we had drafted it for them, uh, in email form to verify that that was written the way that they wanted to proceed. Uh, and the applicant did say that he agreed to the way the legal notice was written, so.
No, I didn't, okay.
You, do you want to withdraw the application? I'll give you the same option that we give the last person, the last applicant.
I mean.
Counselor, do you want to have a meeting with your client right now?
I mean.
You think you need one? I do.
Ron.
I mean, I can defer.
So then, let's just ask this question if I, if I may.
You're here under four A.
Okay, so then, so then, let's just say you, you approve four A, then what does that, what that, what, what does that mean?
Well, let's wait till we get there.
So I'm, I'm.
Uh, so if the board wanted to proceed under section four A, they would be specifically looking at, does the, uh, uh, application, does, as it's submitted to the board, meet the, uh, requirements for.
Pre-existing use.
Of a pre-existing use.
Of a pre-existing, pre-zoning use.
Okay.
You have the evidence that would support that.
Yeah, and then if you approved that, then, then would there be any other issues that, does anybody else know, know about in terms of zoning?
So again, in terms of zoning, if the board wanted to grant the relief under section four A and allow it as a continuance, um, they would be affirming that it is a two-family. Uh, that would then, again, it would, if there's building code issues or separate issues with other departments, that would be a separate issue. But from a zoning standpoint, it would then be, uh, not grandfathered, it would become a legally, um, conforming use.
So the answer to your question is no, there wouldn't be anything further zoning lies. But you would be required to do all a legal two-family needs to do in terms of safety. If we do or approve.
We only, we can only, excuse me, we can only approve of variance. We don't approve building codes and things like that. If so, if you were to be approved, you would still have to have. Yeah, you still have to be subject to inspections, you'd still be subject to whatever requirements there are necessary for either health or safety or both.
Yeah, so I would just continue on as, as if it were, or has been and is a two-family.
But why don't you tell us what, the, what you have to show that it was a two-family?
Yeah, we haven't heard.
We haven't seen any, what we've had is a little bit of bad talk.
Yeah, well, I know.
But you have to be okay with the notice.
Hold on, Lisa, hold on. So. So what are you presenting? So far, we've seen nothing, okay?
Well, I mean, the only thing, the problem with the notice is the addition that, that you guys.
So you're here under four A.
Guys, you guys inserted that for a request for.
We're not here under nine, we're here under four A. Do you have evidence that you wish to present under four A?
We do.
Okay, so go with the town, counselor.
We have, uh, and the board should have much of this, I believe. Voting records, again, uh, we have.
All right, well, I'll start with my presentation.
Yes.
Could you walk us through it?
Anyways, one of, one of the.
Look at his presentation.
One of the, uh, items that if you remember in the pertinent information section, section was the visible, visible ev, evidence, right? Because I think that comes into the play, you know, if it's built as a two-family, then, you know, it's built as a two-family. You can see here, this is the fuse box.
Let's keep it back there. Once we bring it here, we have to keep it, and I don't want it.
Well, I'll just come by and show it to you. You know, this is the, this is the fuse box.
Something fell out of it, just so you know.
You can see, if you look on the, the, you see the original sticker, sticker there, right? That you have a copy, copy of, right?
So, with all due respect, uh, I, I just want to note, um, again, in my clarification memo, um, I note how the, the board has to weigh, uh, separate evidence. Things like utility boxes and other, uh, opportunuses are not, not necessarily, um, direct evidence of, um, how many dwelling units are there. Again, Selco operates under a separate set of regulations, separate rules, separate definitions. I did, uh, through extensive research on our own, um, I went through the tax evaluation records of, um.
Right, I saw that.
Of the, that the town has. Um, I did look from the beginning of the, uh, house's construction, uh, in nineteen fifty-five. It was, uh, assessed as a, uh, single-family use with garage and storage.
Excuse me?
With garage and storage, that designation.
It's not a dialogue, could you please take your seat again?
That designation exists in the tax assessor's records all the way up until nineteen seventy-three. Uh, after nineteen seventy-three, the next, um, so again, that's through zoning.
Through zoning, yeah.
Uh, the next assessor's records then note in nineteen eighty, uh, as a, uh, single-family use, or, sorry, yes, single-family use with, uh, additional apartment. So that would suggest to me, um, from the assessor's records, that between nineteen seventy-three and nineteen eighty, uh, the garage and storage space was then, uh, potentially finished into habitable space without the required building permits. Uh, so that may account for, um, the now, uh, supposed two-family use that, uh, does not have the legal protections without, from a zoning standpoint, without the building records.
Do you have any documentation that would show that it was two-family pre, pre-zoning?
Oh, well, hold, hold on, he, he, he just claimed that it says that it's a, uh, single-family home, the assessors. When in his, in his memos, he just said it was a house with a garage, right? And, and then he said, that indicates that it, that may indicate that it was a single fam, family house. He didn't, it doesn't actually say that it's a single-family use.
My understanding in dis, in discussing with, um, the assessor.
You need to provide evidence to us that it is. We don't have to provide evidence to you that it isn't.
Well, I'm just concerned when he says something that.
My understanding in dis, in speaking with the assessor is that the designation of single-family use was separate, that there was a separate, uh, use designation for, uh, multi-family and two-family use at the time that would actually be written in if it was supposed to be a two-dwelling unit. Or if there was an apartment use, they would have noted that as well, uh, in the original assessments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, I wonder if we could take a step back for a second.
Sure. What's that?
There's a lot of material in the file. I think it would be really helpful to the board if we could just in an organized way walk through the evidence that supports your claim.
That's what I was doing and, and then, but he brings up something that's not true.
I, that's not really going to be helpful ultimately. I think it would just be helpful if you could make your presentation and, um, we avoid the back and forth to some extent.
Okay, so, uh, let's first go through the affidavit that's, um, that you have.
Sure. I think we have a few, maybe a few different sets, so, um.
Well, let's first turn your attention to, to Mr. Ronald Downing, Jr., uh, whose father and grandfather owned one ninety-six Grafton Street in nineteen fifty-five. And, and note that this is a, a signed affidavit with a witness signature from Mr. Downing, Jr.
It says it was built.
Some additional information.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Downing, Jr., uh, again, he's a, he's a neutral party. He, he was the owner, but he has no interest in this case. He, he provided this affidavit stating that in nineteen fifty-five, it was built as a two-family house with separate entrances plus separate electrical and sep, and septic tank connections. His grandparents lived in one unit, his parents lived in the other unit. After the property was due to his parents only in nineteen sixty-two, the apartment was rented to other unrelated families. His mother sold the premises to Mr. Wallace in two thousand and two. Uh, he lived there starting in nineteen fifty-nine, between sixty-three and sixty-seven.
Was he, um, just sorry to interrupt, was he born in fifty-nine? If they owned it in fifty-five and he started living there in fifty-nine?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out his age.
I'm not sure when he was born.
Well, he started living there in nineteen fifty-nine, but it looks like his parents lived there before that.
Yeah, so he would have been a child, uh, growing up there, okay.
I would presume that he was born in fifty-nine.
Um, so in, between sixty-three and sixty-seven, he states it had been used as two-family dwelling, uh, which was rented out to people, including the Oberlander family, Toyota, Wantanabe, Hewitt, and Ruffin.
So between, so he's representing between, I'm sorry, sixty-three.
Sixty-three and sixty-seven.
Seven, okay, so when he was between four years old and eight years old, he was able to identify it as a two-family from his memory as a sixty-year-old.
Again, I, I don't know how old he is. I don't know how old he is, I'm just saying that this is, this was what he signed, um, under, under oath.
Okay.
But he's also states it was built in nineteen fifty-five with the main unit and an apartment unit over the garage, which was built with its own separate kitchens, kitchens and entrances. And in sixty-three, uh, in addition, with a crawl space, added two bedrooms to the main unit. Two separate electrical meters existed no later than nineteen sixty. So this is from someone who lived at the residence. Uh, we also have, uh, multiple affidavits from, well, and someone named Joan Francis Oberlander.
Which is in the voting records.
Who, uh, lived in the, in the apartment over the garage at one ninety-six Grafton Street during the years of nineteen sixty-five and nineteen sixty-six. Who was born in nineteen forty, so that would have made them twenty-five. Uh, Ronald Downing and Shirley Downing and their two children lived in the principal unit while we were living in the apartment unit. Two families. And he's stating that it's, it's an annex to the, the unit in the garage. It's, it's a separate and distinct unit. Um, they're not, they say they're not related to the Downings. And the pictures of the assessor's office, which I believe you should have in your file, um, from nineteen seventy-six are representative to how the premises appeared in nineteen sixty-six. So that's a direct resident, adult resident who is pre-zoning, under oath telling you that they lived there separately, a separate family in a separate unit, um, which they designated as an apartment above the garage.
But to clar, sorry to jump in, just to clarify though, so there, if you take the affidavits as being true, no reason not to that I can see, it establishes that they lived there, but the sort of threshold question is whether or not it was legally a two-family when they lived there.
It establishes it's a two-family.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I also wanted to note on those affidavits, um, if you go through, so things, you know, there's, there's issues with accepting that evidence as in regards to dwelling units versus families living there. I note that they state in nineteen, between nineteen sixty-three and nineteen sixty-seven, it was, um, Mr. Downing and his brother that were living there. So we may run into similar issues of abandonment of use. There's also, um, the fact that just because, um, I'm renting space out to someone that doesn't legally from a zoning standpoint establish a two-family, uh, if you rent out your bedroom, it doesn't become a two-family use, uh, for zoning. So the board should be cautious of those issues.
All right. Sorry to interrupt, continue.
I don't, discontinues of the use from the Downings, I'm not sure I follow that. If it's pre-zoning that they stated that they lived.
Because if there was a two-year period where it wasn't used, then that would abandon the use.
The zoning bylaw wasn't enacted until nineteen sixty-seven.
Yes, that I'm saying is, is any two, uh, uh, let's say if I accept that contention. If there are any two-year periods where there's not.
Then go back to, go back to Ronald Downing where he says it goes throughout the whole period.
So again, so, so, I mean, without splitting hairs too much, but, um, the affidavit says nineteen sixty-three to nineteen sixty-fan, seven, it was inhabited by, um, a, uh, Mr. Downing and his brother, which then would be, uh, a single-family. And so then. And so, then at the date of the establishment of zoning, it was being used as a single-family. So, again, just has, the board has to be cautious of accepting the information. You know, there may be, you know, opportunity to further clarify with Mr. Downing on the exact dates, if that's something that comes into question, but...
And just to clarify, I heard Mr. Wallace say that the Downing affidavit establishes that it was used nonstop as a two-family from 1963, but I see here in paragraph five, it says between '63 and '67, as well as '67 and 2002. So there is a gap there.
Well, I think he just used that as a reference to say that June 19, I presume June 1967 is when the zoning bylaw was enacted. Is that why?
Yeah, so then even if you started, if you assume January 1st, 1966, then you're less than two years, if you want to be completely skeptical about it.
Yeah, I do. You know, it's...
So...
Even the affidavit says examples of unrelated family. It doesn't show continuous use.
So I guess, I would respectfully suggest that in the light of the assessor's records, which I would recommend as more compelling than signed affidavits from residents, obviously the board can, I defer to the board on weighing that evidence, but I'd suggest that in the light of the tax assessor's records, these affidavits may not have as much...
I thought we just had a discussion that the assessor's records are separate.
Yeah, they assess what they see. They saw a one-family house. Up until 19, I believe, eighty, a house.
What I'm saying is, I thought we weren't taking what they had as gospel, because in the last case, they're saying they see a three-family, but now you're using that to prove the contrary.
Yeah, if they don't have, they're not going to...
But you were also doing the same thing.
I understand.
I can assess less than what they see.
So, to clarify, in this case, separate from the other case where there was specific building permit records, in this case, we do not have building permit records. In reviewing the evidence, for me, my opinion, my professional opinion and recommendation is that the tax assessor's records were the most compelling out of the evidence that was provided. And so that's why I provided that recommendation that the board weigh that.
But you guys didn't provide any evidence at all about that.
We don't have to. You do. You do.
That he's, that he's stating that it says is a one-family from '73, but he doesn't provide any proof.
So I didn't, so I didn't provide the supporting documentation, that's correct. The tax evaluation records, if you've ever seen those books, are very cumbersome. So, if the board does feel that that supporting documentation is required, I'd be happy to figure out a way to scan those, whether it's...
Or photograph it.
Take a photo, or, yeah.
And also on the issue...
But I would defer to the board if they feel that they need that supporting information.
I would appreciate it. Say it.
I almost want to say it's not going to be necessary, but...
Well, I know it's not for you.
Right. Well, it's not going to be for at least me and one other, so, anyway.
I was just going to say, so, the affidavits, we also have the Hewitts affidavits here that relate to the seventies, so that point is taken. What else do you have beyond those things, if you want to just sort of walk through quickly what you have?
Yeah. Go ahead.
How do we get to this point where we're at today? How did this come up? Was it through the building inspector?
Sure. So I can tell you that there was a complaint from the tenant in the apartment that related to housing code violations. And when I asked, this is in a strictly single-family zoning district, could they explain further how this apartment came to be, I gathered more information from the tenant and then referred that tenant to the health department to address the housing code violations, but then issued a letter to Mr. Wallace stating that there is no permit history converting a single-family to a two-family, and so therefore there was a building code violation and zoning violation.
So, if I may just speak in general, after talking to Mr. Downing, right, I mean, I basically thought that I had, it was gold here, because I have the voting records, right? And then now I have Mr. Downing and Joan, Joan independently corroborating when it says in the...
The building permit would be better.
And the, right before, right before and right after, and, and he, and he's stating that it, basically the whole, the entire time, it was, 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 used as a two-family dwelling. And even before, before that, it was built with two separate units from the very begin, very beginning, right? And even though that there's, what was being, one family living there at the time, it's still a two-family dwelling, according to your definition.
In 1955, when this house was built, it's, yeah, it's in the exact same status. It hasn't changed, there's been no alteration, no structural alteration. And, again, just because two families, or the same families living in two different units, doesn't mean it's not two units. And pre-zoning, I've spoken to this before, but it was, it's almost the Wild West. Regulatory regulations were completely different from what they are now. And it's my gathering that the board may be thinking that this use was illegal and therefore you can't grandfather use that was illegal that started. But the fact that they were, they started renting out this place post-1955, pre-1967, shows at least, at a bare minimum, that there were two different families living in two different units. I haven't seen any paperwork stating that this, that two units was illegal at the time that this was built. There's nothing in the town records that says when this was built, it was specifically designated as a one-family and use of it as a two-family, it was illegal, because there's no zoning bylaw then, so I don't know how we can...
But there were building permits.
There were building permits, but, again, the house was built and there are two different families living there for an extended period of time, from 1962...
Three.
Three to two, to present, really. We're talking about...
I got the whole, the whole history. And then also, if you look at the definition of, so regardless of the structure, right, if you believe, we have the parents, the parents living there with their two children, right, or four people, right? And then you can see the history, how you had this other, other couple, other, these other couples living there, that brings it...
That doesn't establish that they're legal two-family house. It establishes that two separate families live there.
We're establishing...
So give us some evidence that shows...
I'm just saying establishes the use, that by your definition, it's beyond five, five unrelated people, that necessarily requires, say, you saying that there were, the use was two families living there, living there, independent of the, independent of the structure.
Does anyone have any questions? You want to go through more?
Well, no, I mean, if it's helpful just to say where I'm at, I, I don't have any reason to disbelieve the evidence that you have that shows that two families lived there at various times in the house's life. I think maybe you might put less weight on the affidavit of someone who was a child when they were there, but as you said, this other tenant was 25 when she lived there. But as, as the chairman is saying, the sort of threshold question for us is whether it was legal when they were doing that before zoning. And if you have a great piece of evidence to show that it was, that would be helpful. It sounds like you're saying that there's sort of an absence of evidence that it was illegal. I'm not sure that's as persuasive. So that's, so where I'm at right now is I don't current, I haven't seen anything yet that shows me that it was specifically legally a two-family at that time. The lack of a building permit, you know, might suggest that it was built as a single-family as it was assessed in '55, and then they altered it at some point, and there's just no building permit. So that's, that's sort of what I see when I look at the record.
That's not, that's not Mr. Wallace's fault. I mean, why does the town not have good records? This is, this is...
Well, my point is that they might not have pulled a permit, and they might have just altered the house to build an apartment within it, and then there would be no permit.
It's 1955, post-World War II. People were doing whatever they wanted.
No, but...
I'm sure it was quite a state of nature in 1955.
Respectfully, I would have to object to the characterization that it was the Wild West. We did have building code.
Yeah, I mean, there were still building permits required.
You had a building code when?
And, and again, regardless of the regulatory environment, a lack of permitting doesn't make that an okay thing. It doesn't establish it. So, I'd suggest, again, I kind of note in the clarification memo, another way the board can look at this, because we are under the special permit, the three-part test that's suggested by town council and the preceding kind of legal framework. So in that, I kind of wrote my memo, my memorandum around those three, three criteria, looking at essentially, does the use reflect the nature and purpose of the use prevailing when the zoning bylaw took effect? And so, again, for that, I noticed that the voter records provided do indicate that a number of individuals cohabiting in the space, so that's compelling evidence of that, as you noted. But again, especially with the affidavits of a single-family unit inhabiting in 1967, as well as the tax evaluation records, I suggest that the zoning in effect was the And then the second criteria is there a difference in quality of character, as well as the degree of use? I suggest that there is a difference in quality between a single-family and a two-family use. It's much less than the difference between a single-family and an in-law apartment use, that is a use that is allowed under our bylaw by special permit. And so, that differentiation of character between single-family, two-family, and in-law apartment, I think is clear that, under our framework, we do see a difference in quality of character of those separate uses. And then, is the current use different in kind and its effect on the neighborhood? And I cited essentially the special permit criteria of noise, traffic, and other potential impacts that the board may want to consider in regards to allowing a more intense use than what zoning establishes it as. I note that the existing lot is undersized in both setbacks and area to support a two-family use. So, that's another aspect the board may wish to consider.
Go ahead. Pick your best shot.
So, if you look, refer to his memo and his little three-part test, you have to go back to the, what your town council and even his references, and it's referring to a change or alteration, or change in use, change in use, right? That basically would happen, have to have happened after 1967, right?
So, to your point, you're contending that the structure was two dwellings from the beginning, from 1955.
Yep.
But we are providing proof, or our town planning department is providing some evidence to the board that something changed, according to assessor records, from 1973 on. So something, something triggered a change, and so we, we're going to weigh that evidence, and we're going to look at that as if it became a more finished-off two-dwelling home than it was before when it was built. That's how I'm looking at it right now.
A more finished, well, I mean, he contends that the garage was finished. The garage is still a garage, and my car parks, parks there, so...
Who contends? I don't see that.
Hold on one sec.
The assessors...
Lisa, hold on one sec.
Okay.
So the, the assessor's records, there's a specific language that's used, is that it was a house and garage and storage addition. I wouldn't attest that it was the specific garage or a storage space that was finished. I would just note that the apartment does not get noted in the tax evaluation records until 1980. And so, seeing that change in the assessment, that they're no longer assessing the storage area or the garage addition, suggests that that may be the space that was finished off. If we want to look at specific floor plans of where the, the second unit is, that may give more information, but...
I just ask, that might actually be helpful. So I'm looking at the picture that you provided, the assessor's photo. So you say it was built as a two-family in 1955? Are there two front doors? How is it sort of arranged as far as getting from, into the units? The person that you have an affidavit from, from the sixties, says that they lived in the apartment above the garage? And I'm just wondering, sort of, how is that configured?
I mean, I use the south two entrances for the apartment and the north two for the main unit. If you look at the plan diagram, you can see.
You have a plan diagram?
The north and the south, south. But it...
I haven't seen it.
Walked with only...
Yeah, I don't think we have a plan diagram in the record, but that's the kind of thing that I think, it would be, if you say it hasn't been altered at all, it'd be interesting to see, like, how the units are separate.
You know, I mean, the thing that was altered was the addition in 1963, '63.
Can we move along? What?
Well, I, and so, you know, to your, his assessor record, record point, right? You know, it does say it was a ranch house with garage in 1973, likely saying, but if you look at the actual, it's a blow-up of what you already have, which might be C, 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 you can see that they, that they, that they have a slash, and the actual original hat, you can't make it out. Now, does that say apartment right there? Or, or what? I can't make it out.
This handwritten piece?
This piece, it says slash, slash.
Something and then...
And this is the codes that they've been, been using. A ranch house with garage and undisclosed stor, storage is what they, is what they use. Now, I had spoken to the...
Can you, let me ask a simple question.
To the assessor?
Okay. Do you have any evidence that would prove continuous use as a two-family house from 1966 to yesterday?
In continuous use?
Continuous use, without a gap, from 1966 to yesterday. Do you have that?
Well, that's Ronald's affidavit.
No, his affidavit is not evidence of that.
What do you, what do you want to...
It is evidence.
I want, I want a building permit. I want a lot more than someone's affidavit that was two years, three years old, four years old, what he's attesting to.
It may be a highly technical thing, but I also want to clarify that the letters that are submitted may not technically be affidavits. My understanding is they do need to include the language that it's under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Yeah, some do say.
All the important affidavits say that.
Before we get all too bogged down, I just want to mention, you're talking about the powers tests, but...
Sorry?
The powers test, the three-part test, the powers test only refers to non-conforming uses, so the change or the extension. So, for you to use the powers test, you would have to first make the determination that there is a non-conforming use, and in this case, the board is, is, we haven't made that determination.
Well, the board is currently hearing it under section four A, which is a continuance of a non-exist, non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming use, so under that section, I would suggest that we're already under that premise.
Is there anyone out here that wishes to be heard on this? Is everyone here for their own hearings? Okay.
So, in, in talking to Ronald and these other people, they, it's basically...
That's not enough evidence, okay? I've said it like fifteen times. I don't want to keep repeating myself, but you're putting me in a position to that.
What, what evidence do you, do you want?
I told you, I want a building permit. I want something that shows it establishes, I want, you know, town assessor's records?
Well, I mean, to tell you the, so let me, let me give you, I forgot to tell you some of the backdrop story, if I may, as part of my presentation, since we continue to interrupt. You know, before I bought, purchased this house, right, my real estate agent took me to town hall, and we visited, first, we visited Selco.
Selco, as I said in the prior hearing, I don't care what Selco gives the second permit, the second meter.
But if I just may tell my story, you know, I understand that's a little...
Give us evidence that, of the threshold that we've established in the prior hearing and this one.
I'm, I visited Selco, and they told me it was a two-family residence, right? And now, recently, I just got it in writing that they still think it's a two-family residence.
Last time I checked, Selco does not issue...
I'm just saying, I'm trying to give you...
So again, Selco has separate definitions, separate regulations, so even if they consider it two-dwelling units, that does not establish it under zoning.
Okay, well, and then I visit the assessor's office, and I see that this house with the apartment, and that they're taxing the use on that.
And you've had the benefit of the income for all those years where you shouldn't have. So I'm not, you know...
And then... And then finally, I visit the building inspector's office, right? Because my chief concern was to find, find out if this apartment was legit, legitimate, right? And with the permits and documentation that they showed me, and what they told me, it was a legitimate, legitimate, uh, legitimate place. Now, one of the documents that I really wanted to have, have for you was the nineteen sixty-three addition permits and paperworks, which showed the floor plan and plot plan diagrams. Now, I did a public request, records request, um, at the end of November, and the result was that the only documents, when I requested any and all documents for, related to my property, the only thing that I got back was my own zoning application and an email Mr. McGoldrick had sent, sent me, was the claim that the Shoes, Town of Shrewsbury said that I had no other records except for that. I then called the, the town clerk and talked to them a few times to just make sure that, you know, it seemed like there had to have been some sort of mistake, right? That obviously there are other records, records here besides just what I gave you a month ago, and I tried to give him opportunity to correct that and give me the information that I need, need. And so, that nineteen sixty-three, um, paperwork, which my real estate agent saw, I saw, as well as Ronald Alleray has seen, seen, obviously goes a long way to show, showing you how the inside of the house looked like in nineteen sixty-three, if that's an issue. Now, in terms of the use, there are two, two families there, um, so.
Well, in closing, I just want to say, it seems to me that the town's records are nonexistent. I mean, there's nineteen sixty-one building permit in one case, there's no building permits in this case. Why are there no permits? And why should Mr. Wallace have to provide a permit when it should be the town's responsibility to keep accurate records?
Well, I mean.
I mean, he's being penalized because the town's, and again, nobody here was alive, or maybe alive, but no one here was working of working age in nineteen fifty-five, and, and nobody here could possibly have known what was going on then in regards to issuances of building permits, but Mr. Wallace is being penalized for an activity which you clearly have proof from nineteen sixty-three that multiple families were living there.
I would not accept that.
And there's no definition of what a two-family is specifically in the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw. So, if you're to look at the standard definition of what a two-family is, in, in the dictionary, talks about two separate units, two units. Doesn't say two separate families, it says two separate units, and in nineteen fifty-five.
Actually, the building code does have definition of a two-family dwelling, the bylaw, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, two-family dwelling, as well as the definition of one, one family. And then, like I said, when you have the, the, the two people plus the four in one family and two, the couple, right? Both of those people actually had their first child there, but.
I, I think if there are.
That gets to two-family use.
If there's, if there's a town record from nineteen sixty-three that shows the house configured as a two-family, I think that would be very helpful to see. I'm disappointed that, um, we don't have that before us, and I'm not sure what the remedy to that is.
I mean, by, by law, the, the town of Shrewsbury is supposed to, to have forked off all, all documents that they had, had, and they didn't give me any, anything, anything. I've got the, the emails of their, their, my requests and, and their response. I also spoke to the chairman of the, the, uh, zoning, uh, the state zoning board, and he said to make a public request, and that if they didn't give it to you, that, that I could use that as part of my defense. I didn't actually think that they would, they wouldn't give me any, anything, but.
Can I just speak to this issue about?
Absolutely.
About the records?
Yes.
So, the town of Shrewsbury, we maintain good records for when applications are submitted. We now have an electronic permit process and maintain very good records. So, a hundred percent of records for properties that are sold, I'm not saying that we have a hundred percent, but when an application is submitted, we have a filing process, and we can generally locate those permit applications. So, there is some gap in your information, but certainly with a records request, we do our research. Chris McGoldrick proved how much research, um, that he put into this. We've all spent hours of research on properties to determine if there is some grandfather use and what the history, the permit history is. So, there isn't any permit history on this property that would support the two-family, and all our obligation, or all I should say is the objective here is to maintain life safety, because again, when you have uses that are not clearly defined, we have to make sure that we have safe occupancy. That is really the intent of everybody here, to make sure we have safe occupancy.
And so, but obviously, I would like the documentation that, that I, that I requested, right? I mean.
So, when you make the request, we answer to, to give all documents, and you have requested, and we've given all documents on file, and believe me, Chris McGoldrick, Kristen Rapolo, myself, we have researched the files in our office. We do, there's no other documentation to provide to you.
But you're, but they are.
You're claiming the absence of the file is, is proof.
But they, but here, clearly, I got these assessor's records.
And I, I have assessor's records that show it's a single family in nineteen whatever year.
Up till nineteen seventy-three.
Okay, but again, the same argument we used, you discounted in the last hearing.
Except it's the opposite, so don't go there.
I'm, I'm just saying, I mean.
So, just to clarify, um, the assessor's, the assessor's records, why I was, uh, relying on those and recommending those to the board, uh, upon finding the gap in, uh, records dating back to nineteen fifty-five for this property. So, since we didn't have that preliminary establishing documentation, um, I, you know, felt the need to, uh, look at some other departments that, uh, may have more compelling for me. The, the assessor's has the most, um, compelling, because they have similar use codes to the building department, uh, maybe not exactly matching, but looking at, they do specify specific interior layouts, um, and aspects of those interior layouts. So, that's why I went to those records. Um, if we had building permit records that, uh, did establish that, I would suggest that they supersede the assessor's records, but in this case, we do not have.
It seems to me, I don't know what the board's position is here.
In this case, we do not have the.
It's an arbitrary designation. I mean, if we're, we're using evidence in one case that applies to.
Except, except it's, you're flipping it, council.
Can I just clarify one more time?
Yeah.
So, so the assessor, again, is going to evaluate and tax what they see, what's there. So, they actually have listeners, they go out to the property on periodic occasions, and they document what they see. So, they tax what they see. Whether or not that's been properly permitted through the zoning bylaw or the building code does not matter. So, their records, when they send people out to the field, have some substantial value to us. So, in both of these cases, in the last case and this case, they're used to give us what they have seen when they've done evaluations of the property. Now, match that up with the permit history, and when it doesn't match, there lies your violations.
There's no permit history.
So, the diff, I, I take that the difference here is that we had a permit that showed, that showed it as a two-family, while the assessor's records are different. Whereas here, we don't have the sort of.
And that's right, and then there's no, there's, they haven't cited any law that you're required to have a permit or whatever in nineteen fifty-five.
I don't need that, sir.
Nineteen fifty-five.
Does anyone else have anything to add?
Nineteen fifty-five.
Any other questions? Does anyone, do you have anything else to add, so we're not going around dancing in circles?
Also, I spoke to the, the assessor's, and he says before nineteen seventy-six, they had no classification system as it's one-family, two-family, or, or whatever. And then, and then the law was enacted, and then they had to run, run around and figure out what was, what was lost.
Council, I'll give you the same signal, if you want to withdraw this application, or if you want us to go to a vote, we're ready to close the hearing.
I'm not sure what withdrawal is going to accomplish for us.
Nothing. It, it's, you don't have a denial. I'm ready to, I'm ready to close the hearing.
What about the, the special?
Hold on, please stop. I'm just trying to, to.
There's nothing new that's been added to this in the last forty-five minutes, okay?
But we can perhaps explain our position.
I don't know where, where you're, you're determining that, that the use was illegal, and therefore, it cannot continue under no, with no proof. You're saying just because we don't have a building permit means it's an illegal use.
I believe last month, you were the one that said that, oh, the town has to prove it. I think you were wrong about that.
And I clarified that position with Mr. McGoldrick.
Can I just, uh, so just one thought, and I don't know if this is helpful or not, but I think, uh, I'm taking it from what you've represented to us, that you have seen a town record, uh, that indicated that in nineteen sixty-three, the house was configured as a two-family. I think that would be a, a very useful piece of evidence, and it sound, and you're saying that that exists.
That, I've seen it in, in my, my, you know, that, especially the diagram, being an engineer, that's the thing that I remember the most. I don't remember the words, I remember.
Right.
The diagram and the plot plan, plot plan as, as, as well.
And I understand you're saying that you did a public records request for all records relating to your property, and you did not receive a copy of that diagram?
Yep, or anything else except for what I just gave, gave, gave them. And, and they even claimed that there were hundreds of records, and then I don't get anything. Then I try to do my due diligence.
So, let me, let me sort of close the loop on that. So, um, on the record before us, I think I sort of leaned towards what the chair is saying, which is that the affidavits are, um, have some probative value, but I think that the assessor's records also have some probative value, and so I'm a little bit on the fence. If there was a diagram and evidence that showed that as of sixty-three, it was already configured as a two-family, I think that might carry some weight. Um, my impression is that you probably have two no votes over here. Um, so, I'm not sure where that leaves you procedurally in terms of what you want to do, but I just wanted to flag that I'm sort of on the fence and would be interested in maybe seeing more information, but if it goes to a vote, I'm not sure how I would vote, and I have a feeling I know how at least two people would vote, um, which would determine the outcome.
So, I put, I take all the evidence that's provided from both the appellant and town departments, and I weight all of them. And I am placing more weight on the change that occurred in the assessor's office, okay? So, each case is taken on differently, and for the most part, I place less weight on assessor's records, voting records, Selco, all of that, um, and place a lot of weight on building permits. But in this case, uh, and I look at the assessor's records as they are going to try to tax, they will tax what they see, and it will be its highest use, if you will. So, there was a change between nineteen seventy-three and nineteen eighty, and there was no associated permit on record. So, I am, I am placing a lot of weight on that. So, I'm, I'm in the middle.
Two, two middles, two nos, two middles.
Yep. And without that additional evidence that you saw, that we don't have on record, I would lean toward the other two right now.
Well, maybe we should continue to do a thorough search for, for that, because I distinctly remember it being.
I'm not continuing this for documents that might not exist.
So, I would, I would suggest that the, the documentation, um, if it existed in any retrievable format, would have been, um, produced during the public records request. Um, again, the, you know, not to, not, not to.
Retriivable format, can you explain that?
I mean, not to, not to go too much, but, um, you know, in doing the research, I wanted to make sure that, um, the board had as much evidence as possible. Seeing the lack of, of the clear building permit history, I wanted to make sure that, um, that the board had the enough, enough evidence to make a fair decision. Um, I looked at the assessor's records, I also went through the, uh, district registry of Ds using the search engine to try and find any kind of, um, information on the, the plot plans, on the A and R plans, um, from some surrounding roads as well, to see if there's any kind of, um, evidence, and although I wouldn't say that that was, you know, all-inclusive, it was certainly extensive, and, and, um, I wasn't able to find any kind of evidence on my end.
Diagram, yeah.
Indicating that it was a, a two-family, so. So, again, that's why the, the assessor's records, for me, from, from that research, provided the most compelling.
Right. So, I think that's, for me, a bit the conundrum. I don't doubt that Mr. McGoldrick's search was very thorough, um, but I don't have any reason to believe.
People are talking unless.
I don't, I don't have any reason to believe you're lying when you say that you saw something, and I don't know if there's a, a lot of harm necessarily in, uh, giving you an opportunity to produce that if it exists, but, um, just one vote, so I don't know.
I'm, I'm ready to close. Where are you? Close.
Close.
Yep. Any other less that's something new? Do you have anything to add?
I, if I can just look through my evidence.
No, because.
I.
We've been here for an hour and a half, and I have six more hearings.
I didn't get to, um.
Can I get a motion?
Just that.
Motion to close the hearing. Can I get a second? There be no further questions or comments? We have been notified of our decision. Can I get a?
Did the motions.
Yep. The hearing is closed.
Hearing is closed.
Our next six-thirty hearing is to hear the appeal of Farm McCann LLC, one ninety South LaSalle Street.
Mr. Chairman, you have to vote on the record.
The vote will be at the end of the meeting. We vote afterwards. We vote on all of them. For a special permit to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under section four dash B and section seven E four A to remove and replace a non-conforming sign upon property located at nine three-nine Boston Turnpike in the Commercial Business District, the subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Pledge thirty-six, plot zero five three zero zero zero. Is anyone here, yes? Take a safe chair.
No, I'm like, ooh. Good evening. My name is Carolyn Parker. I'm here, um, requesting a special permit, um, for the required setback for a freestanding sign. It is a pre-existing non-conforming sign. Um, we are making it more conforming. Um, we are going from a nine-point-nine-foot setback to a two-point-three-foot setback. We are act, and we're also reducing the size of the sign by a hundred square feet, which is a sixty-two percent reduction in square footage, even though we're allowed two hundred square feet. I wanted to throw that in there.
It's clearly less detrimental than.
Yes, and we're actually thirty-three feet from the roadway, because the, the property line is quite far back from the road. And it's pretty straightforward, I think.
Is it lighted or anything?
It's internally illuminated, yes.
Okay. Is the existing lighted?
I would have to assume it is, yeah. I think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think my images are black and white, the sides are black and white.
Oh, here I go.
Oh, I have color.
I got color.
Okay. But it is black and white anyway.
Yours is colored too, yeah. The sign is.
It's a black and white sign, yeah.
Less detrimental.
I am a little bit colorblind, so I apologize if that was obvious to everyone.
No issues, I have no issues.
Anyone that's intended to be heard on this? There be no further questions or comments. We'll take your advice, and you'll be notified of our decision. Thank you.
That's how it's done. Woo-hoo!
Next.
It's always time for a topic.
To hear the appeal of Nelson Point LLC, post office box four-two-seven, Harvard, Mass, for a variance for the front yard setback to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section seven, table two, upon property located at two Nelson Point Road in the Residence B two District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Pledge twenty-eight, plot one six zero 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 zero. Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself. Okay, Mr. Armenti, take a seat, please. Okay, tell us what you're doing.
Hi, uh, my name is David Brown. I am one of the developers of the Nelson Point subdivision, and as was mentioned, uh, this is a request for a variance for a, uh, from the thirty-foot setback requirement from Lake Street. This lot nineteen, which is located at the corner of Lake Street and Nelson Point Road, is because it's in the Residence B two zoning district, and on a corner, is subject to the thirty-foot front yard setback on both Lake Street and Nelson Point. Um, the plan that was submitted with the application was also submitted in the fall to the Shrewsbury Conservation Commission, which complied with both the setback requirement from Lake Street, uh, for the frontage and from Nelson Point Road. The Conservation Commission denied that application because, um, they have a, Conservation Commission, as you may know, has a formal rule whereby they do not like you to build within thirty feet of, of the Butland, Butland line. That's an informal rule, and was never, has never been approved by the, by a town meeting, but they, they do like to enforce it. We generally are able to comply with that, but in this case, we were not able to because of the, the thirty-foot setback from Lake Street and Nelson Point Road. As a result of that denial, we appealed that to the DEP. The DEP denied our application. The DEP denied our application, partially on the grounds that we hadn't applied to this board for a variance. We are now doing that, but because we have, because we, because we made that appeal with DEP, we would be precluded from resubmitting this plan to the Conservation Commission. So we're before you, I'm before you, asking for a variance from the setback requirement from Lake Street. We're not asking for a variance from the thirty-foot front yard setback on Nelson Point Road. If granted, it would result in a sixteen-point-eight-foot setback from Lake Street, which would comply with the ten-foot setback requirement in this zoning district. The hardship here really exists because of the nature of the slope and the proximity of the wetland to the, to the back of the lot line. Approximately a twenty-six percent slope front to back on this property. That combined with the Conservation Commission's thirty-foot informal setback requirement really makes it impossible for us to comply with the thirty-foot setback requirement. It creates a hardship for us. We're not proposing a large house here. This is less than a thousand square foot footprint, so it's an eighteen-hundred-square-foot house. There's a lot of site work that would go into building this house, so it would be very impractical for us to reduce it, the size of this house below eighteen-hundred square feet. So we don't think that granting this variance request would derogate from the intent of the bylaw. We're not asking for a change in proposed use, and we do believe that we have a unique set of circumstances here that relates to this lot. I would also say that we've been building in Shrewsbury for twenty-five years. We've never requested a variance before. But it's the combination of, of what's occurred here that has resulted in us asking for a variance, because without the variance, we really would lose the ability to build on this lot.
And you do have a hardship on the topography.
Right.
For clear.
So that is good of an example of a topography and water hardship, I think.
Does any, anyone else have any questions?
I'm just wondering, are you, are you doing anything, or did you submit anything showing how you're handling runoff or erosion into the wetland area? Is there something submitted to the-
If this, if this variance is granted, we will be submitting a plan-
Well, so that was a comment that I had submitted. They did, they did submit revised plans in regards to the guardrails and utility structures on the property, so. Although it's not required, it was, it was just a consideration I suggested the board might want to look at runoff, but-
And also being within-
The conservation went through it.
Being within a hundred feet of a protected resource, you'd have to get in order to-
If this variance was granted, we would have to resubmit to the Conservation Commission.
Anyway, right.
Right, and they could condition the building.
Okay.
Anyone else? Anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this? There'll be no further questions or comments. We will take another advisement. You'll be notified of our decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next six-thirty hearing is to hear the appeal of Little Creek Academy Summer Program, Inc., seven oh nine Hammond Street, Brooklyn, Mass. For a special permit and/or variance to the town of Shrewsbury zoning by law under Section six, Table one, to operate a camp and outdoor recreational activities upon property located at three fourteen Grafton Street in the Commercial Business District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate thirty-four, plot zero three one zero zero zero. Welcome. Please state your names for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, I know you know me, but my name is Richard Ricker, and I'm an attorney with the offices at eleven Maple Avenue. I'm here with Alex Shabelski, who is one of the principals of this facility. His wife is, is in the second row. She runs the daycare at this location. I would suggest, suggest first and foremost that they've done a fine job. They've been a good community member, and they have a very nice organizational setup at this location. Although you, you have, I think, eleven-by-seventeens in your files, although it's light on, on the plan, the present building is in front of what has been highlighted as the proposed change in facilities. This proposal is requesting a, the ability to, and I believe you have a narrative from Mr. Shabelski as well that, that I submitted last week. You know, the problem with our, our bylaw, again, is that I think the day camp definition dates back to when I was a child in this town, and day camps had tents, and a lot of times the day camps became overnight camps, and, and we used to park ourselves in tents on, for instance, Ross and Hill behind the Shrewsbury Sportsman's Club down there from one forty. There were various places in town that, that the Boys and Girl Scouts and various organizations would basically go and spend the days cutting down trees and building fires and sometimes having tents. Now, the definition that we have in our bylaw says day camps, overnight camps, and campsites where tents are used for shelter. It's a tough decision, it's a, it's a tough definition, and I would suggest to you that what's being proposed here is really a daytime recreational facility for children, older children that are presently served by the daycare on this property. But it is a, I suggest to you, a continuation and somewhat of an expansion of that use, because it, it would provide recreational activities, it would, it would provide educational opportunities, and as much as they're going to, the, the plan is to partner up with local organizations such as the museums in our area. It, it really boils down to a situation where, again, day camp is kind of a misnomer, in as much as in this zone, recreational facilities are allowed, schools are allowed, athletic and amusement and other activities, as long as inside, are allowed. The pool and tennis court outside is by a special permit, which is why I asked for special permits here. The accessory uses are allowed, general outdoor use is allowed, athletic facilities inside are allowed, places of amusement, again, are allowed, picnic areas are allowed, athletics, places of amusement outside by special permit, general outdoor entertainment by special permit in this zone. These are all in the vicinity of Pages twenty-four, thirty-one, and thirty-four of our bylaw. Now, with that in mind, what we're talking about is a facility for our youth in this community, for kids eight to twelve, I think, is what you said. And it is intended to provide them a place to go, and, and a place for families to send their children, for recreational activities, for training, for swimming lessons, for tennis lessons, and for other activities, nature activities, nature-related activities. There is a, as you can see on the plan here, there's a pool that's proposed. The tennis courts are proposed here, and there is a, a new building that's proposed here. The new building is intended to provide indoor space for inclement weather, because if you have kids coming to a place like this, you don't want them to have to stay outside when, when it rains, but you also aren't going to be able to shut down when, when families have planned on having this opportunity for their children to go to, again, for lack of a better term, a day camp. So the reason for the request for variance here was because the building department had a question as to whether or not this came under that definition or not. So I, again, as I think I referred to the last time I asked for a use variance, I referred to Bobrowski's text in which the requirements for use variance are typically different than the requirements for a topical variance. It goes to the uniqueness of the property, and it goes to the economic infeasibility or feasibility of the property, and those are considerations under Kirkwood, which Bobrowski suggests are things that you can use to determine that a variance is allowable.
Can I, one, one question?
Sure, sure.
Could you just point out where the property is located and what building, tent, on this map right here?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. This one here? It's an existing building, correct, or is it?
Well, the existing-
So the, the proposal is the existing building would be removed, and a new, a new structure would be-
No, the existing building would remain. The daycare that was presently there would remain. This, this- The, the present daycare, if, if you look at your eleven-by-seventeens, I think.
It's, it's just very faint on the compact.
Yeah, it's very faint. But there is a faint outline where you can see the present building. This, all of this facility is in basically the backyard of the present facility. So where you have the present buildings right here, Mr. George, you have a new building here, a pool and a tennis court. And then you have Grafton Street down here, and this is Route nine right here. And this is Home Depot right here. So it backs up to the Home Depot property.
Oh, okay. I know this property.
Is that, is that-
And next door on Grafton Street, that's a residential three-twenty-eight?
Yes.
Yeah. Used to be a doctor's office years ago, I think.
Right, right. Now it's, I think, a rental.
Yeah.
So will you be also operating the daycare during the school session? And then this, the idea is to have this summer camp during the summer?
Yes.
Continue both businesses as well?
Yes, yes.
Will the daycare, will you also take advantage of all of this with the daycare as well? Do you have plans to do that?
I think that remains to be seen. I think we have to see how this evolves. This is intended for a little higher-
Older, sure.
Older age group.
Sure.
Kids that need swimming lessons, although, you know, arguably, you know, one-year-olds need swimming lessons.
One more, one more question. Can you just describe outdoor activity that exists today in the daycare?
Right now, we have two separate playgrounds for different age groups. They've both been approved by the town and by state as far as regulations. One is, if you, may, may? If you look at the existing building, one playground is on the edge of this building, and one playground is in front of the building. So basically, the time when this daytime facility is going to be operational on summer, kids from the younger group will not interfere with activities that go behind, because it's going to be fenced for security reasons, and regulations for the pool and stuff, and parking is going to be the daycare in front of the building and for summer program is going to be behind the building.
So the reason I'm asking, so you can answer it this way, I'm, I'm trying to understand the impact on noise, for instance, that going from your daycare to now this new day camp will have. So if you're already operating outside with the daycare-
Which they are.
Between whatever hours to whatever hours, there's some level of noise already. And I'm just trying to understand the impact of what that would be. Right now, it's quiet during the summer, perhaps. Is your daycare all year round?
All year round.
Okay.
We don't close for a single day, at least for like New Year's, and, and behind is a buffer zone between us and the Home Depot, and there's a huge buffer zone as far as the wooded area and the creek itself. That's why the property is called Little Creek Academy. So it's kind of secluded from-
I had a question about that. That area that's marked with the polka dots, is that a wetland? Is that delineated?
Actually, no, that's a storm, stormwater retention area that, that may have to be built in order to-
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant the larger, the larger one.
That, that is wetland.
There's not a lot of businesses there, right? You, you have the whole property.
The daycare and-
Yeah, that's what I mean, but it's all, all you.
Right.
Okay.
I would point out also that the neighbors down here are commercial as well. It's all, it's all commercial.
So there's no real residential-
Trucking company and-
It's the rental next door.
You've got a trucking company, and you've got a car dealership that you actually granted a-
That's what I asked.
Special permit to. So in terms of issues of noise, I mean, I don't really see that that's going to be an issue.
Is three-twenty-eight residential?
Three-twenty-eight.
The next door, the property to the south.
Assessors map here.
Directly to the south.
Please, yeah, sorry.
This one, yeah.
That one there, three-twenty-eight.
No, that's, that's a garage.
That's a garage.
Oh, okay. So there's, there's nothing residential.
That's part of that garage.
Okay, so basically, commercial all the way around.
Yeah, okay.
He has an apartment on the other side of that garage that is a part of that property, but that's, that's his garage, and there's a landscaper that also operates out of there, and there's also a car dealership, a, a used car dealership that operates out of there.
Anyone else have any questions? Anyone in the-
I just wanted to clarify, so, so it sounds like both, so the new structure and the daycare to remain, those uses are going to remain entirely separate for, at least at this point in time, to begin, right? So that the daycare use would remain in the existing facility, and this-
Yes. They're two separately licensed and regulated operations, and they've already taken the steps to get the licensing in place. He's already been accredited. His wife runs the daycare. They will operate as two separate entities.
So I would just want to clarify that if that in the future changes, if there's a mixture of those uses, or that they may want to review if that would change parking standards and, and stuff like that, just to, to keep track of-
But we are, I would point out that we are addressing the parking for both uses jointly together.
Correct, yep.
So the plan does address that.
You okay?
Mm-hmm.
You okay?
Yep.
Anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this? There'll be no further questions or comments. We'll take another advisement.
Thank you.
You'll be notified of our decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next six-thirty hearing is to hear the appeal of On Wheels, Inc., Maxime Sochirka. I hope I didn't butcher that. One thirty-three Ash Street, Walton, Mass. For a special permit to the town of Shrewsbury zoning by law under Section six, Table one, to operate an auto sales business upon property at four-two-one Boston Turnpike in the Commercial Business District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate thirty-three, plot three-one-one zero one, zero, zero one. Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Maxime Sochirka. And I'm here for the special permit for pre-existing business, which is a pre-owned car dealership at four-twenty-one Boston Turnpike, Shrewsbury.
Any issues with?
So not that I'm aware of. My understanding is this is a straight special permit consideration for the auto sales business.
How many cars?
Thirty.
Do we have an issue with-
I believe it is a, sorry, let me just pull up. I believe it is a like-for-like conversion.
Oh, okay, so this is-
It's currently, currently a previously a car dealership.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. So it's the same, thirty for thirty?
Yeah.
Okay. Same operations, and it's around Boston Turnpike, okay.
Do you have much history in the car business?
I, I used to work in this business for a while, so, for like three, four years, yeah.
Anyone have any questions?
I don't.
Anyone in attendance wish to be heard? There'll be no further questions or comments. You'll be notified of our decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, our final six-thirty hearing is to hear the appeal of Joyce Cromit, one oh nine Prospect Street, Shrewsbury, Mass. For a variance to the town of Shrewsbury zoning by law under Section seven, Table two, to construct an addition seven-point-seven feet from the side property line upon property located at one oh nine Prospect Street in the Residence B one District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate sixteen, plot one-one-seven zero zero zero. Welcome. Please state your names for the record.
Hi, I'm Michael Howley. I'm Michael Howley Design, Westboro, and I'm here with the homeowner, Joyce Cromit. So as you know, we're, we're, we're asking for a variance. We have a conforming structure on a conforming lot, and we have really only won a butter, and if you, distracted you with the architectural, but here's the, the plot plan. So we're on Prospect Street. So, we're on Prospect Street. We've got one of butter to the right, and we've got Park behind us and on the left-hand side. So, there's a 10-foot setback, and we really would like to build a legitimate two-car garage onto this existing 1950s ranch, and I brought this drawing along. This is the existing house. It's a wonderful ranch, Joyce just bought it recently, one-floor living, what's wrong with that? But the one-car garage is very narrow. The inside dimensions are eight foot 11. So, you know, most cars are six to seven feet, you want to open the doors in your garage, and of course, the width of this garage makes it unusable. In turn, there's also the third bedroom is on top of that garage. Good news, bad news is, if we fix the garage, we're going to fix the bedroom. And of course, this all costs money, and if we went right up to the setback, we would get really an oversized one-car garage. So, again, it's very expensive to do, you know, all that construction, so that's why we, if we could just get another 2.3 feet, we can get a 24-foot wide garage shell, which, again, would make it a lot more usable and help justify the cost for the construction.
Yes, 60-foot, I'll question, what's your hardship?
Topography. So, we can fit a two-car garage on this lot, and so what I did was, if I can approach...
As long as I can keep it.
You can keep it, yeah. If I can get it apart. Dry weather. Well, you have the share. So, on the, on the right-hand side is our proposal, and again, just going over that 10-foot setback, again, it gets us next to this property line, there's no real butters there, and you can see, we're just going to widen the garage just a little. The existing garage just fits two cars, so we would just have to widen the driveway a little more. This one on the left shows us we can fit a two-car garage in the back of the lot. The dotted line is the buildable area of that lot, but we wouldn't need to get there, so we would have to build or pay this long driveway right up the lot line, and then create a turnaround area, and then some, some sort of area to go inside. So, what we're doing is, we're killing our backyard, and creating this long slope which is going to bring rain. So, we've got a new additional roof at about 572 square feet, and almost 2,000 square feet of driveway to get there. Or, we can get the variance for the additional 30 inches, and then just widen the driveway a little. So, the delta is about 2,000 square feet of impervious surface. So, that's why we really would like to get that variance, because we think it's a better house with the driveway shorter, it's a better street, and again, all that water is going to be gone, gone plus.
And what's the slope like? You mentioned slope.
Yes. So, the delta between the backyard and the street is five feet. So, it's not insurmountable. We make a 10% grade, just barely, and I think that's the town rates. So, 10% rain gets us halfway up the side of the house. But again, you know, it's going to be steep, it's a problem in winter, and of course, we get more rain than we really care to get these days.
So, you're going from a 10-foot through the setback to 7.7?
That is correct, yeah. So, 2.3 feet, and that would leave us with a 7.7 side setback.
The park. There's nobody living there. It's next to the park.
Prospect Park, is that?
Yes, next to Prospect Park.
To the left of you.
Okay.
What is to the left?
To the left, is Prospect Park?
Yes.
Do you have water problems there?
Do I have water?
Water?
There's a lot of water runoff that comes down.
No, it's just, again, it's a very, you know, slope site, the whole street, and again, I kind of think that the park is here, it almost comes diagonally to a rectangle property. This is a low point, I guess, the street is one of the properties, so all that water must be...
I want to see what's, so there's the park.
Yeah, it's the park.
There's a guy there.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this? Anyone up here have any questions?
I don't.
There being no further questions or comments, we'll take another advisement, you'll be notified of our decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's just Mr. Arment now.
Thank goodness.
Okay. Any discussion?
I need to have a building permit to show that it's a two-family.
I think that's the main distinguishing factor here, is that's sort of a question mark. There wasn't something that specifically showed which use.
Right.
Some of the affidavits are more persuasive than others. I think the affidavit of someone who was a small child when they were there and their grandparents built the house doesn't move me very much. Assessor's records I find to be compelling. I think seeing the diagram that they say that they saw of the house as a two-family in 1963 would have been potentially persuasive, might not have moved me all the way over. That is not before us. Just his representation that he saw it, and I don't know how much weight to give to that. So, I, I tend to lean towards denying on the record before us, but could be persuaded.
Anyone else?
I am the same, leaning to, I would deny it based on what we were given. I placed the most weight from the appellant's side on the affidavit from Joan Francis Odelander, but then I weighed that against the assessor's record showing a change between 1973 and 1980 that leads me to believe a structural change was made. So, I placed more weight on that, and that leads me toward denying.
I'm definitely leaning towards denying, but applaud the appellant for all the work that he did in giving us lots of evidence, but that lack of a permit is, is a tough pill to swallow.
I haven't seen a fuse box like that in years.
Yeah, but I think it's, you know, they had very good evidence that it was occupied by more than one family, but I think we need the answer to the first question, which is, was it legally occupied by more than one family?
That is the question, was it legally?
Right. So, can I get a motion?
Motion to deny.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor of denial, or actually, all who are opposed?
We all deny. We don't say aye to deny.
Yeah, okay. I already signed it.
Let me do.
All in favor of denying.
All in favor of denying, yeah. All in favor of opposing. Next is, 864 is continued. That took care of the first three hours. Now, 939 Boston Turnpike, special permit. There's nothing really to discuss. The sign is less non-conforming, so anyone have, can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Can I get a second? All in favor.
Aye.
Oops, wrong. What's the address on that one?
We're against denying that one.
Nelson Point. The variance, front yard setback.
My main concerns about that one are environmental, and those issues aren't for us. I think in terms of topography and water and all those sorts of things, I think they, and the public interest, I think it's better that it be closer to the street on Lake Street than closer to the wetland. Am I the wrong one?
No, but Paul shouldn't, oh, wait, that's, I'm sorry. That's farm, okay, yeah, yeah.
So, I don't think I ultimately have a problem on balance.
And I would approve.
No problem.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second? Anyone a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You get this, that was Nelson Point, correct?
Yep.
Yeah. And also, the fact that the guy's been building here for 25 years and has a cross variance.
Not for nothing.
Yeah, that was pretty impressive.
As opposed to someone that's been building here for 25 years and has 25 variants.
Right.
Next is 314 Grafton Street, Little Creek Academy Summer Program Inc. Oh, is this special permit or variance? What are we?
314, so I would suggest it's a variance for the day camp. That's the relief that was requested.
Okay, I'm good with that. I'm usually not big on use variances, but it's an isolated property.
I'm very persuaded by the idea that it's, that what is meant by day camp, day camp in the bylaw is different from what this actually is. It's more like a recreational use outdoor, and if, and those uses even says tennis is, tennis courts and swimming pools are allowed in the same district, so I'm fine.
Can I get a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor. Aye. Next is 421 Boston Turnpike, change ownership of a...
No issue.
No.
No issue.
Yeah, I think it's about the 10th time it's been here. It's got to be more for you, if you've been on the board longer. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed?
We approve with the same shit.
Okay. Say, is there any other conditions on it? I probably should have asked that, but...
Um...
Are there resisting conditions?
I didn't.
It would have come up when you reviewed the file, I presume, okay. Last, oh, no, that was On Wheels, Prospect Street. Normally, to be totally honest, I would be opposed, but since it's right next to the park, because there is no real hardship, there's no one being infringed upon.
It's de minimis, and I think the slope actually, I think, could be effective, and the water flow could be effective.
That was a creative argument.
And it was an excellent presentation.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. 5-9 Julio Drive was withdrawn without prejudice. 196 Grafton Street was unanimously denied. Not in any order. 314 Grafton Street was unanimously approved. 2 Nelson Point Drive, also unanimously approved. 939 Boston Turnpike, I always like when they're less detrimental, unanimously approved. I'm waiting for this one. Do you need to sign that one? 109 Prospect Street, verbally, it was unanimously approved. Hopefully, they will sign that. Any other new business or old business? Any correspondence?
Nothing other than what's on the...
And I just wish to express my regret that you'll be leaving us, but I know you're moving on to better things.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
It's been great working with you, and take this as, as a compliment. I think you've, like 180 degrees from when you first started.
I will say, I feel that, and that's one of the reasons I've had such a pleasure serving on this board, is that it has given me the opportunity to grow in a position and really sharpen my skills, so I appreciate it.
You will be missed.
Chris, you've helped us a lot in our determinations, and I really appreciate it, so thank you.
And can I get one final motion for the evening? Thank you, second? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Leave that in first.
421 Boston Turnpike was unanimously approved.
Here's another one.
We're a mess.
We're a little tired tonight.
109 Prospect unanimously approved, we are adjourned.